Board of Appeals, Ms. Kennedy, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Mr. Dolman?
Here.
Ms. Pacheco?
Here.
Mr. Daly?
Here.
Mr. Stein is late. Mr. Antonikowski?
Here.
Chairperson Hope?
Here. The first matter on the agenda is a review of the minutes from June eighteenth. Is there any conversation or discussion on the June eighteenth minutes?
Make a motion, we accept them.
Well, hold on one second. There's no conversation. Having heard no conversation, would somebody like to move to approve the minutes?
I approve. Make a motion.
A motion's been made to approve. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
A motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Kennedy, we call the roll on the motion to approve the June eighteenth minutes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yeah.
Mr. Stein? Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, the June eighteenth minutes have been approved. The next matter on the agenda is a review of the July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five minutes. Is there any discussion relative to the July sixteenth minutes?
Yes, Chairman, line four, four, seven, I believe should be struck in its entirety. The motion was to table the project.
Okay, line four, four, seven says upon voting, the motion was granted, seven oh, the motion of the variance was approved. And your application is to amend the minutes to reflect what actually transpired was that the motion was tabled. Or the motion was to table the application, which was approved by a seven to zero vote. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So there's a motion to amend the minutes. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded to amend the July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five minutes relative to line four, four, seven. Ms. Kennedy, we call the roll on that.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Stein? Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, and is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended, the July sixteen, twenty twenty-five minutes as amended?
I'll make the motion.
The motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Kennedy, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, the minutes from July sixteen, twenty twenty-five have been approved. Okay, Laura, have you heard from Mr. Stein?
I called him and I texted him and I have not. He was here for the last.
Understood. Do we want to go out of order and go to the next matter or leave that? Yeah, okay. Why don't we take the second matter on the agenda, the appeal of Armin Herella? Could you, could you call the matter, Ms. Kennedy?
Appeal of Armin H- Her- How do you spell?
Herelia.
Herelia. For a variance from section two, twenty dash thirteen schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at one forty-nine Fieldstone Drive, Niskuna, New York, located in the R-two medium-density residential zoning district to maintain a hundred-square-foot deck partially within the side and rear yard setback. Section two, twenty dash thirteen schedule IC requires a fifteen-foot minimum side yard setback and a twenty, twenty-foot minimum rear yard setback. As constructed, the deck is located three feet from the side property line and fourteen feet from the rear property line. Therefore, both a twelve-foot side yard setback variance and a six-foot rear yard setback variance are required. Nine notices were mailed, four responses.
I reached out to the builder of our townhomes, Frank Barbera, and I'm forwarding this reply to you. I would like this information to be entered into the record for the zoning board meeting. I hope you received my email yesterday regarding my objections to having the deck constructed abutting my property. Good morning. I received your voicemail this morning and looked into the matter. I found the attached information which should bolster your position. There's a town utility easement running between the properties and would be atypical for a town to allow an attached structured deck to be placed in an easement. Secondly, I would recommend hiring an attorney to represent your interests at the zoning board meeting, especially if you cannot attend. Furthermore, if other neighbors are opposed, they should also submit their opposition in writing to the zoning board. Attached is a map of the subdivision with an arrow pointing to the easement on the north side of this property. To whom it may concern, per your letter regarding the request for a zoning variance by my neighbor at one forty-nine Fieldstone Drive for the purpose of building a side deck, I am replying to voice my concerns and objections. I live next door to one forty-nine at one fifty-one Fieldstone Drive. While I appreciate that the deck allowance given to these townhomes was small, I was well aware of this, as well as the zoning restrictions, when I signed a contract to build this house fourteen years ago. Many of my neighbors, especially with N-units like one forty-nine and mine, have built patios which are very attractive and blend nicely into the landscape of the townhomes. The patios do not infringe on the space, the privacy, or the sightlines of the next-door neighbor. These are my objections. First, a side deck would be completely visible to my side windows. I feel this would infringe on my privacy and interfere with the aesthetic of my property. Second, the deck would extend to within three feet of my property line. Our front and side yards are small enough as it is. Our townhome community is peaceful and quiet, considering that our homes are so close to each other. Having a neighbor's deck so close to my home could disturb the peace and quiet of my house, as well as allow people on the deck to peer easily into my windows, thus invading my privacy. Third, granting this area, this variance would set a precedent for the whole neighborhood. I believe you would receive many similar requests. This could substantially change the aesthetic appearance of our whole neighborhood and adversely affect the values of our homes. I have no objection to my neighbor building a patio on the back and side of his property. I do feel, however, that a side deck is in total, is a totally different category and would adversely affect this neighborhood and my home in particular. I ask you, would you want your neighbor's deck to be within three feet of your property? Sincerely, Catherine Lucas, one fifty-one Fieldstone Drive. To the Zoning Board of Appeals, appeal variance for Armin Herelia, one forty-nine Fieldstone Drive. The town setbacks for this development were made for a reason. There are no side decks in this development. Allowing side of unit decks would change the overall uniformity of the development. To allow a side deck within three feet of an adjacent property line sets a dangerous precedent that might require you to allow similar variances in the future. You gave it to him, why not me? No problem at all with allowing a variance to the back property line setback. Build a deck out back as close to the drainage area as you want. Numerous residents have back decks. Strongly opposed to granting a variance to the side property line setback. Martin Toley, Candace Noonan Toley, one fifty-five Fieldstone Drive. To the Zoning Board of Appeals, August fifteenth. It has, oh, that is a duplicate, you're right. Yep, that's a duplicate. That is all the comments. Did you guys tell him he only has six members?
No, just a quick question then before I get into that. Is it, was there a letter from somebody at one forty-seven Fieldstone Drive?
So, no, actually, there were two letters from one, one forty-nine. Well, okay, no, it was a duplicate letter from one forty-nine. And then we had one fifty-one.
Oh, actually, these letters.
The applicant is at one forty-nine.
Oh, just kidding.
Yeah.
Same signatures, two different letters.
Okay, I'm sorry. They actually did write, it's the same people, but it is a different letter, so I'm gonna read one more. It has come to my attention that there exists a fifteen-foot utility easement to the town of Niskuna for the town drainage area through the property area in question. This easement is shown with the red arrow on the property map attached. I would also like to ask for the record how many residents of Fieldstone Estate Townhomes were informed of this request for a variance. By rough count, there are only forty-seven townhome units in this associated development. I know for a fact that many were not notified of this variance request as I have asked two of our neighbors in this development if they had received a letter, and both had not. Again, specifically how many were notified? Since it seems possible that granting such a variance could affect all property owners in the development, it seems that all property owners should have been notified. We remain opposed to granting a variance to the side property line setback. And that's one fifty-five. So we have two letters from one fifty-five Fieldstone Drive and two letters from one fifty-one Fieldstone Drive.
Okay. And is there a report on Mr. Stein?
Mr. Stein is not going to be attending.
Okay. Well, I would just like to note before we move forward, Mr. Stein's been on the board for several years now. Mr. Stein, this was gonna be his last meeting tonight. He has skipped it for brighter pastures, and we appreciate all of the time that he's spent on the board. And I'd like to just recognize that. And we have some complaints if you're here at the end of the meeting. So feel free. Anyway, getting back to Mr. Herelia. Mr. Herelia, just a point of order with respect to moving forward tonight. We only have six members of the board, okay? So you need four affirmative votes to get your variance approved. You have a right to adjourn the matter until the next meeting, until you have a full board or until such time as you have a full board. Because obviously, if you have seven people on the board, it increases your.
I can proceed, we can proceed, yeah.
Okay, you're willing to proceed tonight?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So the first question that I have, and maybe I'm confused. The diagrams that you've provided, I've heard from your neighbors and your neighbors have indicated that they are adamantly opposed to a, I think it's good, it would be fair to characterize their opposition to a side deck. The diagrams, as I understand them, have the deck that you're proposing coming off the rear.
Yeah, it is rear, it is not a side deck at all. That's one of the comments that I was gonna address. That was from one fifty-five. This is, I mean, I wouldn't consider this a side deck. This is a rear deck.
Laura, is there any reason that there would be an argument that this is a side deck and not a rear deck?
No, it is considered to be a rear deck. I did have some follow-up conversations with them. I think maybe some of the confusion was that it needs a side yard setback variance. And you can see in the drawing, it is not actually in the utility easement whatsoever, it's in the rear.
I also noted that. So the two points that I think that were raised that I think we can, we can affirmatively resolve in your favors is the fact that the, the deck as you proposed it is not in the utility easement and is not on the side of your yard.
That's correct, yeah.
Why do you, why do you need this deck?
Well, all of my neighbors have it. I'm the rear townhouse to the left, and then there's three more to the right of me. And every single one of those townhouses has it. And mine would be the smallest one of the four. It would be a ten by ten versus the next small one is ten by fifteen, which is my right-door neighbor.
Okay. And why do you specifically need this? What are you trying to accomplish?
Well, I guess just sit outside, grill, just like everybody else, you know? Enjoy it, why not? It would be a nice deck, it wouldn't be, you know, it would add value. But besides that, just for my own leisure and pleasure.
Okay, why couldn't you put a patio as opposed to a deck?
Well, I guess I could, but coming out from my rear bedroom or office, it would just be nicer because I have sliding doors just to come out to a deck, as opposed to, you know.
So as it exists right now, you have a slider going down to a set of stairs?
Exactly, yeah.
And you're proposing to remove the stairs and put the deck in?
Yeah, they're just old, that's when, that's how they were all built, just with a little bit of, you know, it's not much, it's like a four by two.
Right. And your argument is the neighbors at one forty-seven, one forty-five already have decks?
All of them, and they're all looking into my windows just like I would be or wouldn't be into theirs.
Okay, so your argument is this isn't a change in the character of the neighborhood?
Exactly. It fits the neighborhood, if anything, actually. I'm the only one that doesn't have a deck there.
Okay. I'm gonna open this up to other questions from members of the board.
Mr. Herelia?
Yeah, Herelia.
Thank you. I also have a question about the neighbors' decks. If you could characterize them in terms of their position relative to the rear.
Sure.
Parts of their buildings. You said that yours is just outside a bedroom or some office space. Are theirs also close to where we can see these property lines?
They're actually closer to mine and others than mine would be at all because I don't have a neighbor to the left of me, okay? The woman, or my neighbor to the right of me, she has a deck that's a ten by fifteen, and she's actually closer to my property than I would be to hers with my deck.
Is there, is there a fence separating?
No, they're so close by, these are all like, literally all next door.
Okay, but there's no, there's no fence separating your backyard from her backyard?
Nobody, nobody, nobody does.
No fences?
Yeah, it's all open, yeah.
Okay, but if there were a fence.
Yeah.
Right on the property line, her deck would be closer to that fence than yours is planned to be.
Yeah, yeah. Hers, her deck right now, as it sits, is closer to my property lines than mine would be after I built it. You know, hers is about two point five, two point five feet away from the, our, our, what do you call it?
Property line, yeah.
Mine would be three, from, from both of ours.
Okay, and I need some clarification from Laura. Are there variances for the other backyard decks?
Yes, there was a variance granted for, oops, me. One forty-five definitely had a variance granted. I'll look up one forty-seven now, but I know of at least one on this building that has a variance granted for its rear deck.
Okay, and I assume once you look that up, we'll know the nature of that variance. The other question I have to clarify is there was some concern from the people who were opposing the deck about how the outreach was conducted. And I could be misunderstanding the regulations, but I believe it's something like all the homes within a five-hundred-foot radius or something of that nature.
Yeah, it's actually like one hundred feet.
One hundred?
Yeah, it's one hundred for residential area variances, two hundred feet for use variances, and I think five hundred feet for commercial use. There's only very rare cases it's five hundred. Zone changes need five hundred.
Okay, so owners within one hundred feet radius of the property boundary were notified officially?
Oh, yeah. So actually, the variance was granted to one forty-seven, so the direct neighbor received a variance. It was three feet, six inches from the side property line and twelve feet from the rear property line to put the rear deck on one forty-seven. One forty-seven is this one, the direct adjacent one.
Thank you, Laura.
Just to clarify, Mr. Herelia?
Yeah, Herelia, yeah.
Thank you. Where, the position of the deck, that's the only access out the rear of the house?
No, there would be a stair, as well, a stair coming, I'm sorry, from the right side. You would, I would have a stair coming up to the deck, too.
Okay, but from, from leaving the house, the rear house, that's the only?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, that slider is the only way out?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Is there any members of the public who wish to be heard for or against this application? Having heard no members of the public interested in being heard in this with respect to this application, is there any member, is there any discussion on the matter? Is there any members that wish to make a motion relative to this application?
I'll make a motion for the variance to be granted as written. Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant, I think in order to achieve the deck, the placement of it relative to the way the house is oriented with its interior circulation makes the most sense. Is it an undesirable change in the neighborhood character? It doesn't sound like it is, per the testimony and discussions, that there are other rear decks on neighboring properties, not just the ones immediately adjacent to the house, but in similar townhouses in the neighborhood. Is the request substantial? Yes, it is. These are setbacks for a reason within the town. I can't comment on the building department's regulations relative to construction materials, but the distance is very close to the property line. And I understand the, the concerns about neighbors with things being close to property lines, but these are townhouses, they're right on the property line. Will it have adverse physical or environmental effects? I don't believe so, based on the discussion. Is it self-created? Yes, it is. You wanna have the deck for your benefit, but I don't believe that makes a difference. So I make a motion for this to be granted.
A motion's been made, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that motion for all the reasons stated.
A motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Kennedy, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Latif?
I'm gonna vote yes, and I just wanna add that the applicant did go with the smallest deck in the neighborhood, so for all the reasons stated before, and I say yes.
Mr. Dolman?
I'm gonna vote yes for all the reasons stated, and I'm gonna add that we would find it hard, I think, to justify denying one person in a row of four a variance for the exact same thing as all of his other neighbors. And that said, I vote yes for all the other reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Antonikowski?
I'm gonna vote yes. I will note that there's a uniqueness about the property in that the twenty-yard rear yard setback is closer in proximity to the rear of the house, so therefore it would require a larger variance with the rear yard setback. And then the side yard setback seems in conformity with other decks in the area as well. So it's yes for me.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, for all the reasons stated. Sir, your variance has been approved, six to zero.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Good, have a good, have a good evening.
All right.
You're all set. Ms. Kennedy, we call the, the appeal by Ms. Kafaga.
Appeal by Leila Kafaga for a variance from section two, twenty dash fifty-two of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at forty-two, forty, Consul Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R-one low-density residential zoning district to convert a Stewart shop to a small café and commercial bakery, which is not allowed in, by code, in this zoning district. The property is most recently used as a legal pre-existing non-conforming retail service store. Section two, twenty dash fifty-two A states that no non-conforming use shall be changed to other than a conforming use for the district in which it is situated. As proposed, a small café and commercial bakery is classified as a sit-down and take-out restaurant. Sit-down and take-out restaurants are not a permitted principal use or a special principal use in the R-one district. Therefore, a use variance granting the approval of a sit-down and take-out use at forty-two, forty, Consul Road is required. Sixty notices were mailed in July, and we have more than sixteen responses and an updated county referral.
Okay, I just got a couple last-minute emails that I'll read from my computer, and then I'll go to the printed ones. Dear Ms. Robertson, I am a resident of Niskuna and writing in support of Maison Kitchen's application for a storefront at four-two, four-zero, Consul Road. I recently moved from downtown Albany, and I am so excited to hear that Leila is hoping to expand her business and has chosen this community. I met Leila in twenty twenty-three and have known her to be kind, extremely professional and dedicated to her community. I have been a loyal customer, and I am certain her business will be an asset to the Niskuna community. Thank you for your consideration. Dr. Sahir Bialal. Next one. Dear Ms. Robertson, I am a longtime resident of Niskuna for over forty years. I have known Leila and her family for many years. I am a loyal customer of her work. She is a hardworking and highly professional. I support her storefront proposed on Consul Road. I am sure she will be an asset to the community and a successful business. Masrath Shadri, doctor.
Is there an address with that?
Nope. We are writing to the Zoning Board of Appeals in opposition to the proposed bakery at four-two, four-zero, Consul Road. We would like to respectfully share additional concerns regarding the requested variance and the potential impact of this business on our neighborhood. At this time, we feel that the concerns of local residents have not been fully acknowledged or addressed by the ZVA committee or Ms. Kafaga. I'd like to outline a few key areas that are important and that should be addressed. Four-two, four-zero, Consul Road, Niskuna, New York, formerly Stewart shop business classification. I believe there is some confusion about the type of business this Stewart's location was. This Stewart's location was more of a traditional convenience store, not one of the larger, more modern versions you might see in the area. It is a single, small table and chair neat, near the front window, but those were removed after a truck accident accidentally went through the window on a snowy Saturday morning. This Stewart's location didn't prepare cooked food on-site. At most, they would heat up prepackaged items they offered. Due to the size of this Stewart's, it's not really set up to accommodate a sit-down space. Traffic, traffic along Consul Road is still a concern we have if a commercial business were to operate at this location again. As previously mentioned, when Stewart's was operating at this location, we witnessed multiple accidents and near accidents. One of the main issues was drivers attempting to back out onto Consul Road, which is especially dangerous due to limited visibility when looking up the road. Again, as previously mentioned in our original opposition, when Stewart's was in operation at this location, it was often challenging to get in and out of our driveway. Many drivers in the parking lot assumed they had the right of way and pulled out abruptly. Additionally, the corner of Ferris and Consul Road has always been a risky intersection. During Stewart's operation, drivers frequently cut through the lot, ignored the stop sign, or used Ferris Road as a shortcut to exit. These traffic issues significantly impact and still impact the neighborhood. Adding the additional traffic back to this area by adding a business will worsen the traffic issues mentioned above. In the previous ZVA meeting, Ms. Kafaga compared her proposed business to Mario's in Niskuna. We believe this comparison is inappropriate. Mario's is located on a less busy road, and the property is designed to allow vehicles to loop around the building and exit safely without the need to back out directly onto the street. Additionally, that location is not situated in the middle of a residential neighborhood. While there is one neighboring house adjacent to the business, other residents are spaced farther apart. The layout of four-two, four-zero, Consul Road property does not offer the same flexibility, and backing out onto Consul Road presents safety concerns. Additionally, Ms. Kafaga indicated that she would not commit to installing sidewalks. That's concerning as sidewalks would contribute to pedestrian safety, especially for customers walking to and from the business. If a business is expected to bring more foot and vehicle traffic into a residential area, ensuring safe access should be a priority. Noise, a bakery and catering business operating at this location will likely result in different noise levels at various times of the day. While Ms. Kafaga has stated that deliveries would occur during normal business hours, it's important to note that she ultimately does not have control over the exact timing of third-party deliveries. Deliveries often happen in the morning or late in the evening, and trucks frequently leave their engines idle, which creates noise and contributes to air pollution. Additionally, she has not clearly stated where these trucks would be entering and exiting. Our driveways cannot and should not be used as an assistance for parking. In the previous meeting, it was mentioned that the space may be used at all hours of the day and night since typically that is when bakeries have to get their baking done in time to produce products for business hours. Even if business lights are off, activity at night still generates noise. This is a residential neighborhood, and nighttime disturbances, however minor, affect our peace and quality of life. When Stewart's was open, it operated from five AM to eleven PM. During those hours and after-hours, we often heard diesel trucks left idle in parking lots, loud music from cars left on and parked in the parking lot, and phone conversations from people using the Bluetooth feature in their cars while parked. I acknowledge that no business owner can control the behavior of what customers do in their vehicles, but if this property is left residential, there is a good chance we would not hear these kinds of noise disturbances. Parking, Ms. Kafaga has stated that the business will include seating for up to twenty people. Currently, there are ten parking spaces on the property, including one handicapped accessible spot. Ms. Kafaga's building plan shows three additional spaces may be added along the side of the lot. There seems to be a plan to employ between six to nine staff members and offer catering services. Parking will be needed for staff members and catering delivery vans. We still see parking and an issue as this business seems to need quite a few spaces to operate internally. As mentioned in our previous opposition in the past, we have had Stewart's customers with larger vehicles parked on the side of the road in front of our house where there's a no parking sign. If the bakery becomes busy, and especially around holidays, as is common with bakeries, we're concerned that overflow parking will once again spill out onto Consul Road and in front of our homes. People often justify it by saying they are just running in quickly, but this. People often justify it by saying they are just running in quickly, but this creates traffic hazards, blocking visibility, and disturbs residents. As previously mentioned, we do not want bakery catering customers parking in front of our house or near our driveway. The current parking plan does not seem sufficient for the type and scale of business being proposed. While the possibility of a takeout window wasn't mentioned in the zoning board application, it was noted at a planning board meeting, Agenda Minutes, Page Eight, Line 270 to 71. Given the limited space available, we're concerned that during business-busy times, customers using a takeout window might spill into the parking lot, which is already quite small. This raises some pedestrian safety concerns. As mentioned in our previous opposition, when Stewart's was operating at the property at this property, trucks would arrive very early in the morning and often use part of our driveway to maneuver and back into the side of the building. Our driveway should not be used to assist truck drivers or customers with parking. Garbage. As mentioned in our previous opposition, garbage is a concern. Our property frequently ended up littered with napkins, coffee cups, food wrappers, and lottery tickets, despite the store providing two garbage cans and a dumpster. Even with proper disposal options available, customers often left their trash behind, and much of it ended up on our lawn and around neighboring properties. Since Stewart's closed, there's been a noticeable improvement, virtually no garbage on our property. Environmental Concerns. Additional documentation submitted by an attorney for Ms. Kafaga states that there are records of four petroleum spills that have been remediated. However, the attorney also states that the subsurface conditions at that site are unconfirmed. We question whether this is remediated or more testing needs to be done. As a community member and someone who lives close to the property, this should be confirmed. Testing should be done by the potential owner or the current owner of the property. Has Ms. Kafaga asked the current owner of the property to do this test? Now that the community is aware of the potential for environmental contamination, this issue should not be overlooked. If in the future Ms. Kafaga or any owner of the property would like to dig into the ground, it is necessary for the community to know that it is safe to do so. This is not just a technicality, it is a potential environmental and public health concern. Before any new business is approved for this site, a proper environmental assessment should be conducted to ensure the property is safe for commercial or residential use. Long-Term Concerns. Another concern is the long-term impact of approving this variance. If for any reason Ms. Kafaga decides to move on from this business location, the property now rezoned for commercial use could be sold to another business. That future business might not align with the characters or needs of the neighborhood. Without strict restrictions in place, the space could potentially be sold to a convenience store, a smoke shop, or even a cannabis dispensary. While that may not be the intent now, real estate sales often go to the highest bidder, not necessarily the most community-appropriate buyer. We've already seen similar situations in nearby areas such as the Lyshekill Road in Niskuna, where a smoke shop located in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Allowing a variance to change this property to operate a commercial business opens the door to future businesses that could negatively affect quality of life and decrease property values. Keeping the property residential is about protecting the long-term character and integrity of the neighborhood. Assessment of the Property. After reading the documents submitted regarding a new construction of the property, we questioned the pricing. Some of the estimates seem high. What went into this estimate? Does this estimate include only the best material, including top-of-the-line products and top-of-the-line materials? Does it include only the necessities or extras such as decks, patios, and unique fixtures associated with the high cost? We would like the committee to take this into consideration. Conclusion. While it's exciting to see a bakery showing interest in coming to Niskuna, this location is simply not the right fit for it. Stewart's originally intended to sell this property for residential use, and the listing even reflected that intention, clearly stating that it was zoned residential with a deed restriction prohibiting a convenience store, deli, or coffee shop. In the article by the Times Union submitted by Ms. Kafaga, a Stewart spokeswoman states, "We don't want a gas station, we don't want any food offerings, no cafes, unless we've left the area." Please keep in mind that there is a Stewart's on the corner of Ballton Road and Consul Road, which is up the road from this location. The listing describes it as the perfect spot for a single-family home, we agree, and some of the neighbors do as well. Please respect the original intent and preserve the residential character of our community. This is a neighborhood, and it should stay that way. Thank you for your time and consideration. Liz and Amy Bastian.
Dear Laura, as a resident and customer of Maison Kitchen, I fully support their proposal to open at 4240 Consul Road. Maison Kitchen is a locally-owned, community-centered bakery that brings delicious, high-quality offerings to the area. Their presence would be a wonderful and positive addition to our town. Sincerely, Seema Sarwar.
Ms. Robertson, I am a resident of Old Niskuna, and I am writing in support of Maison Kitchen's application to open a storefront on Consul Road. I have purchased goods from Maison Kitchen for many years. The Niskuna community would be very lucky to be able to support her business with brick-and-mortar storefront. Leila is always a pleasure when I have interacted with her at farmers' markets, and I was very excited to hear that a proposed proper bakery was a possibility for our community. This would be a fun, unique business in Niskuna and the capital region as a whole. I look forward to supporting Leila's future ventures. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Caitlin Chapra.
Dear Ms. Robertson, as a resident of Colony who spends a lot of time visiting loved ones, patronizing a number of current businesses in Niskuna, and regularly traversing the Consul Road corridor, I am writing to express my support for Maison Kitchen's application at a storefront at 4240 Consul Road. I have known Leila for many years, including throughout her impressive journey to becoming a successful small-business owner. A consummate professional and dedicated community leader, Leila and her storefront will expand Niskuna and the capital region's offerings for a vibrant, culturally diverse, and representative eatery. She is an asset, and her business will only benefit the local Consul Road community, bringing additional revenue and community engagement opportunities. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Sarah Ahmed, Loudonville, New York.
Dear Laura, as a resident and customer of Maison Kitchen, I fully support their proposal to open at 4240 Consul Road. This will be a fantastic addition to the business community. Sincerely, Eddie Orlowski.
Dear Laura, as a resident and customer of Maison Kitchen, I fully support their proposal to open at 4240 Consul Road. Leila has been such a wonderful part of this community, and her bakery offers the most delicious treats. Maison Kitchen's proposal to open at 4240 Consul Road will be a great opportunity for Niskuna to boast our diverse community. I hope you consider accepting their proposal. Sincerely, Kashnika Persad.
To the Zoning Board of Appeals, Niskuna, Opposition to variance application by Ms. Kafaga. Dear members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, again I submit this letter to express my strong opposition to the variance change for 4240 Consul Road. I live at 4241 Consul Road, right across the street, and the change in traffic and noise after Stewart's moved out is a huge difference. Unless you live in the direct area around this corner, you do not realize the negative effects the traffic and noise a business makes in a residential area like ours. I believe the lot at 4240 Consul Road would need to have crosswalks and sidewalks so that pedestrians would be able to better access. There are lots of kids on bikes that come to Buckingham that would be riding across Consul Road, which leads me to ask you, are you requiring soil samples, since the lot may have been contaminated soil that would need to be removed and cleaned up? I fear that if this business grows and the space becomes too small, the owner could then sell to the highest bidder, which we all know could be a convenience store or a smoke shop. Stewart's had in the listing for a residential house because they know the area and are trying to help preserve it as residential. Lastly, I ask this to the board members. How would you feel if you lived next door to a business in your neighborhood that will most likely bring your property values down? Why is this even a consideration when this is a residual area of Niskuna? Thank you for your time, Penny Peacock, Agostera.
Dear Laura, as a resident and customer of Maison Kitchen, I fully support their proposal to open at 4240 Consul Road. Maison Kitchen is a locally-owned, community-centered bakery that brings delicious, high-quality offerings to the area. Their presence would be a wonderful and positive addition to our town. Sincerely, Tasli Mashid.
This is actually the same letter from Nahid Akhtar. Dear Laura, as a resident and customer of Maison Kitchen, I fully support the proposal to open their wonderful bakery at 4240 Consul Road. Maison Kitchen is a locally-owned, community-centered bakery that brings delicious, high-quality offerings to the area. Their presence would be a wonderful and positive addition to our town. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Bushra.
Dear Laura, same letter from Adella.
Dear Laura, same letter from Hala Sobhi, 67 Trottingham Drive, Niskuna.
Dear Laura, my name is Brendan Ford. I live on Rosendale Road in Niskuna. I'd like to support my, I'd like to voice my support to Maison Kitchen opening a bakery on Consul Road. I really enjoy the macaroons, cake cubes, and other amazing desserts Maison Kitchen makes. More importantly than that, though, Niskuna would greatly benefit from more third-spaces and locally-owned small businesses. Thank you, Brendan Ford, 3010 Rosendale Road, Niskuna, New York.
Dear Laura, I'm a resident of Niskuna, and I am writing in support of Maison Kitchen's application for a storefront at 4240 Consul Road. I have known Leila for years, and I am a loyal customer of hers. She is a consummate professional with a vibrant, well-established business. She is an asset to our community, and her business will only benefit the local Consul Road community. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Greta Jansen, 6 Seneca Road.
Dear Laura, as a resident and customer of Maison Kitchen, I fully support their proposal to open at 4240 Consul Road. Their baked goods are made with fresh ingredients, are delicious, and have a unique twist on Middle Eastern desserts. I think a bakery-cafe would be a wonderful addition to Niskuna, and their innovative recipes would bring patrons from all over the capital district. Sincerely, Lisa Sherman.
Dear Laura, as a former Niskuna resident, Hexum Gardens, and current customer of Maison Kitchen, I fully support their proposal to open at 4240 Consul Road. They have excellent products and would be a great asset, especially to neighbors in Yvonne Crest, Pierce Road, Hexum Gardens, and the nearby Gulf area. If you hadn't, if you haven't yet had the opportunity to sample some of Leila's creations, I recommend that you do so. There is nothing that comes close in the entire capital district and beyond. Sincerely, Barbara Dorkin, formerly 884 Meadow Lane, Niskuna, New York.
The county referral was updated and signed, and they deferred to local consideration with an advisory note that site plan modifications should be considered to implement better access management. Consideration should be given to installing curbing to better channelize the existing driveways and reduce conflict areas and eliminate patrons from entering the Ferris Road intersection from a non-standard location.
Well, Ms. Kafaga, there was a lot of community interest with respect to this application. I think it's safe to say that as a community, everybody enjoys the products of Maison Bakery. I think that's pretty clear. Before we get started with respect to your application, I just want to let you know, as I said before, we only have six members of the board, so you would need four affirmative votes to get your variance approved. You have a right to adjourn the matter to the next meeting if that's what you'd like to do.
No, I'm okay with keeping it this meeting.
Okay. Before we get started with the substance of your use variance, with respect to your application that was submitted, the attorney, Mr. Luizzi, in your materials wanted or argued, in fact, that a use variance wasn't required because you were continuing with a pre-existing use or substantially similar pre-existing use. I assume that you would like to have that determination made prior to considering your use variance. Do you understand what I'm saying?
What do you mean by that?
Well, a determination whether the town's ruling that, in fact, you needed a use variance in the first place was correct.
Yeah, no, I'm okay with proceeding.
Okay, so you don't want to have that matter heard? Because I'm just, I'm just, I'm saying this because your attorney, in his letter, referenced that argument.
Yeah.
Okay, so are you abandoning that argument? You don't want to move forward with that argument?
At this time, we'll put it to the side.
Oh, well, we're either going to hear it at the outset, or we're not going to hear it at all. That's my point.
I would say let's terminate it.
Okay.
Terminate that argument.
Okay, that's fine. And I, Mr. Hess, do you wish to be heard on that?
Ms. Kafaga, just so we're clear, so Mr. Luizzi raised an argument, and his argument was that your proposal is similar enough to Stewart's prior use of the property?
Yes.
That a use variance wouldn't be required, that this would just be an extension of the prior retail use of the property? If the board made that determination, it would obviate the need for a use variance altogether. The town's position and why they didn't go this route initially was that your use is more akin to a restaurant or a takeout restaurant use, similar, let's say, to Mario's or some of the other places in the town, than it would be to Stewart's, which the town looks at as a retail convenience store. So if you want to pursue that, it would obviate the need to go forward on the use variance part of it. I'm not sure that that sort of squares with what the testimony was or what the evidence, that wasn't at the last hearing, but I'm not sure that...
So let me ask you this. How would that process work if we were to? Because last time in July, that was brought up. Why is a use variance even needed? And it seemed unanimous that everyone was on the page of moving forward with the use variance. So I'm, I would like to know how would that process work? Can that be happening today and determined today? Or what else would that entail? If we go that route?
Yeah, so I think it's a two-pronged thing. The issue is, if you want it addressed, it can either be addressed before you put on your proof as to the use variance, or the board can deal with all of it at the end. So I'm not sure if the board knows enough about the proposed use to know for sure. Again, the town's position is that it's significantly different than Stewart's. If you want to pursue that first, then the board would make a ruling as to the issue of whether a use variance was required prior to then addressing the merits of your argument that you should be granted a use variance.
Mr. Hess, what I would propose is let Ms. Robertson explain from the town's perspective why they believe that a use variance would be appropriate in this particular case.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And then from there, Ms. Kafaga, you can either agree with the town's interpretation as to why a use variance is appropriate, or you could disagree for whatever reasons that you think that the town's interpretation is not accurate. So Laura, I would ask you, as Mr. Hess indicated, this is substantially different, the town's position, this is substantially different from Stewart's in the sense that a convenience store was operating at, Stewart's was operating a convenience store, and Ms. Kafaga's application is more analogous to a takeout-type eatery.
Yeah, so I would acknowledge right off the bat that we actually don't have a definition in our code for a retail convenience store, and we don't have a definition in our code for a bakery. So when I make these calls, I'm using the closest thing or the standard definitions that I can find online, but so that everybody understands Stewart's is, was existing as what we classify as a retail convenience store. Stewart's is kind of, generally speaking, a conglomeration of services, so it does predominantly have retail. It also, you know, they cook pizzas and make bagels and things like that. So, but what, but you know, like what, what we would say is that the majority of the use in Stewart's is retail convenience, and there's some definitions from New York State that say that convenience stores, it's not unusual for them to sell slushies or ice cream or anything like that. So we, we put Stewart's in the bucket of retail convenience store, acknowledging that they do have sit-down tables and things like that occasionally. And then the reason that we put Maison Kitchen in the restaurant kind of bucket is that the predominant use and the definition of restaurant in our code is that its function is to serve food to people, and there may be some ancillary services, like if she makes, I know that like when I go to really cool coffee stores, sometimes they have like, you know, T-shirts that have the coffee name on it and stuff. But any retail that in there would be kind of very ancillary to the fact that the whole point of the building is to make delicious treats for people. So we put them, we put them into those categories.
Let me just ask you this. The Stewart's location at 420 Consul Road, they didn't have gas there, they didn't have anything, you know, any other ancillary services other than the sale of retail largely food items there. So does that change the analysis from your perspective at all?
So, I mean, Stewart, that, there isn't a great way to classify Stewart's, but I think that when you look at New York State's definition, a convenience store is the only thing that you can put onto Stewart's. Like, you wouldn't call Stewart's a restaurant. Its predominant function is not to serve food. It's predominant, like, you know, even if you just look at the percentage of floor space in a Stewart's, it's mostly retail, like candy, you know, they've got like a million refrigerators of, you know, they're, they do have some ice cream, you know, and they make, you know, drinks and things, but they are only, like, their, their function is a retail. they are only, like, their, their function is a retail store.
Wasn't it also significant that they, they're not preparing, they're not baking, cooking food? They might be reheating food, but there's a...
They definitely don't do anything from scratch. But, I mean, I think there are some similarities, but when it comes to actual code, and because those definitions are, I'm looking in other places to truly put them in different places, that Stewart's is going to be retail convenience. So if an, if a new business was going to come in after Stewart's, which would be allowed under site plan, it would have to be a retail convenience. It would have to have that, you know, like retail component. And, and then it would be allowed to continue there. When, when the use changes to the predominant thing being just a bakery, then it's no longer a convenience store anymore.
I know some of the, some of the individuals were concerned about other types of retail establishments being, being started at this location in the event that the zoning variance was approved or denied. What other types of convenience, any type of retail store could be approved for that location?
Yeah, so really, that law is grandfathered in for any retail.
Including cannabis?
Well, yes. I mean, our code would not allow, our code does not allow the retails of cannabis in the town limits. But we do, you'd have to look, it needs a variance. It could probably, you do see them sometimes turned into smoke shops. And the town, pre-existing non-conforming use, it's locked in at retail. So any retail, so going from retail to retail would just be a planning board site plan approval. When you go from retail to a different use, which we are saying, this predominantly is not retail. She's predominantly making things like treats for people. It's not...
I understand the distinction the town's making. I just wanted to classify or have an understanding of what else could go into this location. And you're saying a smoke shop could, notwithstanding the fact that cannabis is not allowed there, but...
Correct. So we are not, I mean, and we say this to the planning board a lot. Like, we, we, we can't really control the type of retail, just as with restaurants. Everybody got mad at us when the planning board had to let in the tilted kilts. It, it's a restaurant. Like, we don't, like, we can't say this type of restaurant is not allowed. So as it exists right now as a retail store, any retail could go through with planning board site plan approval. If, if it's going from retail to a different use, then it has to get a use variance.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kafaga?
Laura, this is for one year, right? Because then they lose that after one year.
Correct. Yeah.
It goes back to an R1, no detail, nothing.
Correct.
If they say...
If they abandon it totally. Sometimes, yeah, sometimes they'll do, like, the gas, the gas station Route seven would open for like a day in order to add its, keep its, yeah, yeah, you know that because you live near there. So there are ways around that, but...
So, so...
I just have, I have another question for Laura. I'm sorry. I just want to clarify. So theoretically, if the, if the process moved forward with recognizing that it does need a use variance because it is a change of use, changing it to the bakery would, if it were approved, prohibit certain uses from coming in afterwards.
Correct. You would not be able to do retail there if it got a use variance for, we call it a restaurant takeout. You could potentially have another sort of smaller food-based business go in there.
Right, but it wouldn't...
Site plan would limit it, the number of seats. But yeah, it would only be like a food service place there afterward.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anything, any other questions directed at Laura from members of the board? Okay, Ms. Kafaga, you, you heard the distinction that was drawn by the town. Do you quarrel with that distinction now? Do you want to be heard on that?
I think so. So if we go that route and we vote, and it's voted on...
We can, we can vote on that.
So I'm trying to understand the process of it.
We can vote on that issue, okay? Whether to approve the town's interpretation or overturn the town's interpretation, and then still proceed this evening on your use variance.
Okay.
Okay, so with respect to the first issue of whether or not you believe that the town correctly interpreted what you're, you're intending to do there and whether it falls under a retail establishment, what, what is your position on that?
I believe I'm more a retail establishment than a traditional restaurant because I don't plan on offering full-service sitting. Similar to Stewart's, they were heating up things, dealing with fresh products, not just packaged, prepackaged items. Their primary sales were food. So I would say I'm more similar to that regardless of how the food is being made. I would say I'm more similar to a traditional retail space than a restaurant takeout type of spot.
Well, wouldn't you concede that there's a difference in the sense that you're getting raw ingredients or ingredients that are going to be mixed, processed, and you're going to be baking them at the, the store for sale? That's different than Stewart's that was basically just selling, maybe they were preheating items that were already made for retail sale.
Yes.
That is a distinction, correct?
Hundred percent a distinction. I guess for me, I'm trying to understand whether it's being made or prepackaged and brought over because I could technically keep my kitchen somewhere else and have the retail here, right? And just offer the food that we sell. And that would still be retail because it's not made on, on site. So for me, I'm trying to understand whether it's made on site or made somewhere else. Food is being sold and it's not a full-service restaurant where we have waiters and waitresses. So I guess for me, I see it as more similar to a Stewart's establishment and to a traditional retail because we're going to have people come and grab drinks, grab food. I don't plan on probably having the twenty seats originally. I think parking-wise, it just doesn't make sense and I'm hearing the, the neighbors, right? So it would be a handful of spots similar to Stewart's. They have their sit-in spots as well. They're serving fresh ice cream, drinks, similar to that. I just, for me, help me understand the distinction of if you're making it on-site or having it brought in elsewhere, why does that constitute a variance as needed?
Well, I mean, I...
What makes a difference?
Well, I think originally, as the application, as I understood it, you were going to be running a commercial bakery at the location. So you were going to be baking things there, not only for retail sales, but also for catering and to be sold at other locations. Wasn't that in the original?
Yes, that is a hundred percent still the goal of that location, where it'll take up probably, I think it's about six or eight hundred square foot. So half of the space would be the kitchen. The other half is bathroom, office space, and the counter space for customers to come in.
So in other words, would you concede theoretically, if we were to say no baking could take place at this location, only retail sales of your baked products made elsewhere, that would, you would still move forward with this project?
No. I, I would need the, the baking spot and kitchen there. For me, I'm trying to kind of better understand whether it's being made on-site or elsewhere. What does that make in the difference of a retail spot? I'm trying to understand that from your perspective. Yes.
Yeah, so retail is just that. You are taking a finished product to market and selling it, right? And I will agree with Laura that Stewart's probably had a bit of creep over the past several decades, et cetera, et cetera, right? And I understand your question is like, hey, what's the difference between making a sandwich out of deli meat and bread that's baked somewhere else versus baking the bread here and selling? I think that the essential difference is the primary business use that you, that you are proposing, unless I'm wrong, so please correct me, is you're going to create the food there.
Yes.
From scratch for resale, both on-site and off-site, for catering. And it sounds like, if I recall, maybe also for retailing at other locations.
For wholesale, yes, as we do have wholesale.
And I, I think that's the essential difference, right? You, like you just said, for wholesale, right?
Yes.
Wholesale's not retail. And, and I understand, it, it's not, it's not a, a clear, shining, bright line, especially with the weirdness that, that Stewart's was, right?
Yeah.
Still is everywhere, right? In fact, I mean, you walk into a Stewart's, they don't advertise their, you know, seven dollars a box Cheez-Its. They advertise, come in and have a sundae, have a...
An ice cream, yes.
Have a, have a milkshake that they make there. But I would certainly say, regardless of whether Stewart's had crept too far based on their initial pre-existing variance, you are not proposing a convenience store.
No, I'm not. And it's actually not allowed. So for twenty years with the deed restriction, they won't allow that, so.
So, okay.
Yeah.
So, Ms. Kafaga, is there anything else you wish to be said with respect to the first issue?
I think for, for Mison going in there, the focus is serving the community with food, fresh food, quality food, having it be similar set of, it is not a traditional sit-down. People won't be there for hours. It's takeout, quicker food, better food for you. And for me, Stewart's was selling food, we're selling food, we're making it fresh. It's even better. It's actually better timing, hours of operation, and traffic for the community. So I would, that's all I'd have to add to that for my argument.
I, I appreciate your position. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to see whether we can just take a vote on the issue of whether or not a motion could be made to confirm the town's position that, or overrule the town's position that this establishment needs a use variance as a sit-down and takeout restaurant, which is different from a retail convenience store. Is, is that be appropriate?
That would be a totally appropriate thing to do first.
Right. So we're going to do that first. So is there any discussion on the, what has been presented by Ms. Robertson and Ms. Kafaga relative to that issue, not the use variance issue, but the interpretation issue? Is there any discussion on that? Okay, having heard no discussion, is there anybody that wishes to make a motion? Either, your motion is either going to be to confirm the town's position that this is, that a use variance is required as this is a re, a sit-down, takeout restaurant as opposed to a retail convenience store, or alternatively overturn the town's decision and you would move that the, the two uses are substantially similar enough that a use variance would not be required? And if you are going to make that motion, please articulate your reasons.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I would like to move that we confirm the town's finding that this is not a retail convenience food market. Regardless of what Stewart's is or was not, this is not a convenience store.
Okay, and your justification for that? Is there any, is there any...
My justification for that is that the, the applicant has stated that she intends to produce food from scratch, fresh food on, from scratch on-site for both retail and wholesale distribution, including catering, which is substantially different from a retail convenience store.
Thank you, Mr. Dolman. A motion has been made. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
A motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Kennedy, we call the role relative to that matter.
Mr. Latif?
If I'm correct, I'm just, we're confirming, we're supporting the town's decisions on the motion, so I'm going to say yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, for the reasons stated. Okay, Ms. Kafaga, as I indicated, now let's look in a more fulsome way into your original use variance application as well as the additional supporting documents that you submitted. As you recall, just for the benefit of anybody that wasn't here at our last meeting, we had requested some additional financial support from you relative to the prong of the analysis that we must consider, that you couldn't realize a reasonable return from the property, and that we were looking for some financial data to support what you articulated last time. Thank you. I appreciate the fact that you have supplemented your application with additional information. Do you wish to be heard on that?
I, I guess we could start with any questions on there and I could...
Okay.
Add more if needed, as you guys had time to review the numbers now.
Yeah. Is there anybody that has questions on the financial information that Ms. Kafaga has submitted? I think in some summary, what, what the financial documents that were submitted represent, that the costs associated with turning this into a retail home for sale would exceed the costs of homes in the area, and that therefore a reasonable rate of return could not be realized based upon a comparative analysis of homes in the area as well as construction estimates from, I think it's Con, Con Construction. I think, and there's another also estimate from...
Burns. Burns Management.
Yes. So there's, there's multiple estimates in there. Is there any questions on those documents, or does anybody wish to discuss that with Ms. Kafaga further? Okay. There are other prongs to the test. I appreciate that you've submitted some financial information that we had requested. I think that most of what I heard from the community that was in opposition has to deal with the essential character of the neighborhood being altered. I also note that, and I have a question for Laura. I know that the town referral had suggested that curbs be installed. Would that be, would that, would that be included in the planning board process?
Yeah, the planning board, the, the referral is to both the zoning board and the planning board, but those are really site plan comments. The planning board would explore whether or not the curbing should be added if the use is approved.
Okay, and that is something that the planning board would, would likely take up based upon the recommendation or the, the comment. Ms. Kafaga, I, I guess, one of my concerns with respect to the essential character of the neighborhood, we had a retail establishment operating there. I think the, the comments from the community indicated that was very disruptive to the residential neighborhood or the residential character of the neighborhood. Could you explain to me how your operation would differ from Stewart's and alleviate any of those concerns?
Yes. So first, we won't be open seven days a week and I believe from five to eleven. I believe they extended their hours to twelve at night. We would be open ten AM to roughly six PM, potentially on Fridays, a little later, days before holidays, potentially a couple hours later to give people enough time to pick up their, their baked goods. Because of that, all of our, majority of our companies that would be delivering would be on a fixed schedule, like Cisco and these food distribution companies. They give you a week's notice. You set a allocated time with them, and that would be on our off days, Monday through Wednesday. Potentially, we'll be open Wednesday, depending on demand in the future. But for right now, we plan to be closed Monday through Wednesday to prep and make everything fresh. So during that time, all of our deliveries would come. We would try to mitigate that as much as we can in respect to the neighbors. I plan to have signs inside and outside and make sure none of our customers or deliveries are parked or encroaching on any of our neighbors. I feel like that is completely disrespectful, and I'll try to handle that as much as we can.
Ms. Kafaga, could I just interrupt you with a question with respect to deliveries? Because this is something that was in my mind. Typically, when I see, when I think of deliveries, I, I think of them coming early in the morning, you know, before, you know, five in the morning, six in the morning. Is there any way that you would control the deliveries to, you know, after, later in the day?
Yeah, I mean, right now, we get deliveries at, from Cisco or so at another location, and it's like one PM in the afternoon, and we could kind of influence that date. And a lot of stuff, we, my team is picking up locally, right? But yes, I would ensure that it's during working hours, potentially seven AM to eight PM at night.
Okay. So when you're saying you're going to be open from ten AM to six PM, you're talking about as a retail establishment, correct?
As the storefront, yes. Open to the customers to come in, deliveries, things along that line.
And what hours are you proposing to be open outside of?
Like where my staff is working in the kitchen?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, so ideally, Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, when we're not open, we're there, we're a little more flexible, right? Because we don't have customer facing time. Ideally, we'd be there seven to seven.
Seven AM to seven PM?
Yes. I can't say we won't have late nights if we have a big wedding or catering event the next day or a market. My operational background in the corporate world and with finance, I'm hoping to utilize that to ensure we have the most efficient operations to be considerate to the neighbors around us.
Okay, and then I know that parking was a concern... Okay, and then, I know that parking was a concern. You already referenced that you were going to limit the number of tables inside. Do you envision this, this establishment more of a coming and get your stuff and leave with it type of place, as opposed to a hangout kind of place?
Yes, we plan to have potentially a few, different from, from what I originally submitted. I would say we're gonna have a few, our bar stools along the window, and then potentially a community table where people could sit, chat for a bit, and probably no more than twelve, fifteen seats. I just think the space, I need to utilize it more for the kitchen than for seating.
I, I know that you submitted a site plan that had parking already established. I'm familiar with the lot. Are you flexible to work with the planning board with respect to alleviating any traffic concerns, or, or painting the best possible traffic flow relative to this parcel? I understand that it's somewhat, somewhat constrained.
A hundred percent. And the added spots, I believe, on the side where the trees are of the building, right there, that would be for our employees. So there's no traffic coming and going on that side. It's just so our employees aren't taking up customer spots, which would help people in and out a little more. But those added spots, the three spots, would be designated for our employees.
You, you understand with respect to this application that unlike an area variance, you have to hit all of the prongs to the analysis. Why, why do you believe that? You know, I, I can understand why you would assert that this property is unique in the neighborhood. It doesn't affect a substantial portion of the, the district or neighborhood. But why don't you articulate for me why you don't believe that this hardship has been self-created?
Because I haven't purchased the property yet. If this variance doesn't get approved, I am walking away from the contract, and it's contingent on municipality approvals, which is contingent on this. So if this variance doesn't happen, then Mizan Kitchen isn't happening in Niskuna, so.
I'm gonna open up for other members of the board to ask questions. Is there anybody else on the board that has questions?
Yeah, just a quick question. And I know we have to find out, and you did put some numbers explaining having a house there versus a business and so on. The question I have in the kitchen, which I'm concerned about the neighbor who lived close by, talking about garbage and some of the issues that they had when the other store was there.
Sure.
So you said you're gonna have half of the place for baking. And I know like certain restaurants, when they have, like if they frying food, they have certain fans where the smell doesn't go to the neighbor. I'm not sure about the bakery, how that works, if you can explain it to me.
Yeah, I mean, we would have a hood and an exhaust fan, but that's obviously inside, what it's doing on the outside and putting out, I don't, it would be like any other restaurant.
So do, do they come and check those? Because I know there, there's a rule on how often you gotta clean them and make sure.
Yeah, I believe so, throughout our inspection annually or so, or every six months, whenever the inspections happen, that would, that would be part of that.
If that smell becomes obvious to the neighbors, then there's a way they can come and clean it and so on?
Sure, yeah, if that's a concern, we would, we would definitely clean. I mean, the goal is to have the kitchen as clean as possible, always. So yes, that's, that's definitely a concern.
Okay, because, and how about the garbage and stuff? Would you be having a?
Yeah, it's right there, that brown circle in the back. It's probably the best access for the garbage trucks to come in without interfering with traffic or parking. I would most likely have two right there, and also part of our operations would be cleaning up the lot, making sure our garbage isn't, isn't everywhere. Unfortunately, you can't control that as much as I would love to with our, our customers, but I would, I would say we're gonna have less garbage than Stewart's. As you open up a bag of chips, you eat it, your kids are throwing it, like this is packaged items in bags. It, I would say it's gonna lead to less garbage, but I, my team and I would be very mindful of that in the surrounding area.
Okay, thank you. I'm good for now.
No, thank you.
Hold on, Ms. Pacheco?
Sorry.
Ms. Pacheco has a question.
Yes, Ms. Cofaga, a couple of questions for you. I know Mr. Latif was just talking about the garbage, and you pointed out onsite where that would be located. Are you anticipating a large amount of garbage, like a dumpster, or one of the smaller residential bins on wheels?
It would be a dumpster, potentially two. One for recycles, one for, because a bakery gets a lot of cardboard boxes, and we wanna make sure we're recycling, and then one for garbage.
Okay.
And I would probably have it picked up twice a week if I can.
So the dumpster would be a rectangular metal container, but located in that area?
Yeah, that's where Stewart's had it, and I've consulted with a few people. It probably makes best ti, situation and positioning for it, for the garbage truck to come in, not interfering and potentially hitting a car, or, you know, the flow of traffic and patrons walking. So that would probably be the best location for it.
Okay, thank you. And the other concept I wanted to address for some of the people who wrote in with concern about the soils, is just to clarify that with the application that you're making, you're not digging into the ground and disturbing anything that is underground, and that may be something that not everybody would understand, that if the property were to revert to a residential use, and the current structure torn down and the foundation removed, et cetera, that's when the environmental cleanup would be triggered, because that's when it would become obvious and the testing would happen. So the requests for doing the environmental studies at this point do not make sense with the application that is on here, correct?
Yes, correct, and thank you for stating that.
Thank you.
Ms. Cofaga, with respect to, getting directly to the dumpsters, this being a residential community, is there any way that, and I understand that Stewart's had dumpsters there, is there any way that you could enhance, enhance the appearance of the restaurant by, by camouflaging those dumpsters?
I personally would love to build like a wall over time, where the truck comes in, comes out, and it's kind of blocked off. I would, I would explore options that's in my larger plan over time to fix, because I think it's an eyesore as well. So I can't make any commitments to that right now, but it is something that I'm considering in the future. And I, again, wanna have it picked up on off-hours, if I can get some kind of schedule going for that, so.
Because I know that there are certain establishments that have the dumpsters inside, that have gates on the front that have to be opened
Yeah.
to get the, to camouflage the appearance.
Yeah.
Mr. Daly, do you have something?
Yes, I got a question. Laura, I bought, I, I was down here building today, and I must say, that is a nice building.
Yes.
I've been in construction for forty-two years. That, that building, you, you got a, a deal on that building, trust me. On, yeah.
So, Mr. Daly, you took some photographs of the, the, the building?
Yes.
And you'd like to make them part of the record?
Yes, I did. You can come forward.
Okay.
This here is that little walkway going down. I don't call it a walkway. I call it, I'll call it a walkway, but it's not. That's for entering the building?
No, that's for the employees and for deliveries and...
And deliveries.
That's in the back. Customers will not be going there, because that'll walk directly into our stockroom and the kitchen.
Right.
So it's not for...
Okay, that, that's what I thought it was. You could actually put a dumpster to the right where that line is.
Yeah, so I guess my concern of having it there, because I'd have the parking spots, a garbage truck, it's, there's a lot of ability.
You could put a dumpster right next to this and still have, you're not gonna have big trucks coming in there, that's for sure.
We will for our deliveries. Cisco, US Foods, they do deliver, yes, yeah.
Although, they could fit back very comfortably there.
For those, the garbage trucks work a little differently, and I would, I would suggest the other side, as cars will be parked there, and when our deliveries are happening, cars won't be parked on, our employees will be parked on those, because we're off-hours.
Right.
The garbage truck, depending on the schedule I make with them, or whenever they can, I'm not sure I can dictate that schedule, I don't want them to come where people are potentially walking, cars are on the side. It's a risk to the cars, it's a risk to everyone involved, so I'd rather them put it there, because that's where Stewart's headed.
Over here.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
That corner. And I don't, I don't know if this applies to the zoning?
Mr. Chairman, so the issues that relate to the dumpster, the deliveries, the garbage, are all real issues. And I think that the neighbors have every right to be concerned about them, and I think that the applicant is smart in taking the public comments seriously. If this application were to receive a used variance, this is a discussion that the planning board would be having. It would likely require the dumpster to be enclosed, like we do with many establishments. So unless it's critical to whether or not it meets one of the criteria for the used variance, I, I just want to make sure we maintain our focus on the issues that we have to.
I, I appreciate that, Mr. Hess. I do believe, to a certain extent, it does impact the essential character, the neighborhood prong, and I think to a certain extent, the questioning, limited questioning is appropriate with respect to the placement of the garbage cans, or the dumpsters.
So if they, it'd be a very simple thing, if they just put a, a fence, some kind of... Oh, I'm sorry.
So, yeah. So, Mr. Daly, I think you're just, you, you're expressing your position as to where you think that the best location for the dumpster would be, correct?
Well, they got an alternative, in here, over here.
Right.
Or they could put a dumpster up in here.
Okay.
And still, if I'm correct, please correct me.
You're not gonna get a dumpster down that side out.
Okay, okay.
My neighbor, and I've been there very often, you're not gonna get a dumpster down that side out.
All right.
At least if you're gonna have two.
Sir, 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 hold on. You have an opportunity to speak, okay? And to Mr. Hess's point, I think we're going off the beaten trail here, okay? So, Mr. Daly, I think your position with respect to the placement of the dumpsters and your concerns for alternatives can be explored.
Put them right there, then.
Okay, and your, your point is noted for the record.
All right.
And let's, let's move on. Are there any other questions relative to the application for members of the board?
Yeah, just, well, I'd like to come back to, if you can explain, I know you submitted some of the stuff, but I wanna hear on the record, if you can explain to me your reasonable return for the business, what you're doing, and I know it's in a package, but if you can summarize it to us, that you, how you cannot realize reasonable return, and I know you haven't purchased it, but you have another store, so you can compare these, and, and if you can let us know in summary, you know, some of the reasonable return and the competent evident for your financial.
Sure, so the reasonable return will, would not be realized if it was to stay in the current variance that's allowed the residential, and if this was converted to a single-family residence. So the single, is that what you're, I just wanna make sure I understand the question. You want me to walk through those numbers?
Right, because the hardest thing for me is right here, you don't own the business yet. You don't own the property to tell us your financial, but I'm assuming, from what you submitted, that you compared having it as a resident and selling the house to somebody, and how much it's gonna cost, and having it as a business.
Yes, yeah.
So if you can explain that to us as a board, just to, and I know it's in the record...
Be on record, sure.
Just to put on record.
Okay, yes. So if you start off at the purchasing price, that's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, you could probably knock that down to two-twenty with Stewart's. So let's say we're at two-hundred-and-fifty thousand at the purchase price. To demo, and we got a quote from a demo company, it's about fifty thousand, they quoted, so we did a range of forty to sixty. To remove the parking lot, that's about twenty-five to thirty-five thousand. Then environmental testing and remediation. So on the low side, it's fifty thousand. On the high side, it's a hundred-and-fifty thousand plus. We know of a similar space in Niskuna, similar square footage that had remediation done. It was about a four-hundred-thousand dollar bill, just to give you an idea of a sixteen-hundred square foot lot.
So is the remediation, i, i, if that happened, that's mean you can build a house on it?
So the remediation, they would have to completely replace all of the soil there with new, and then you could put a house on there. So let's say that's happening, you're ready, five hundred thousand right there. The new home construction on the low end, it's about three-hundred-and-sixty thousand. On the high end, with the extra features or whatnot, was four-hundred-and-forty thousand. Landscaping, again, small lot, it's about twenty-five to forty thousand. Permits plans, all these other items, low side, seven-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, high side, a million. In the MLS, I did a search for comparables in the area in the last six months, point-five mile radius, what has sold, the average is four-hundred-thousand. So unless you have about eight-hundred-thousand cash to put on this, because no bank, A, is gonna touch it if there's remediation, and I'm coming from fifteen years' branch manager banking experience, as that's how I started my career, no bank is gonna touch it, as well as at the same time, no bank is gonna finance it. So unless you have private funding or cash on hand to build eight-hundred-thousand-dollar home there, your return, you're, you're gonna be negative right off, right away. Unless you plan to sit there, and like I said last time, if the values of our home increase to a million plus, maybe one day, I think we're all hoping, that's not gonna happen. And in talking to contractors, in talking to appraisers, in talking to demos, in talking to a lot of professionals, about ten to twelve professionals we called in the last month, half of them, some of them laughed, don't even buy the property. Anything with environmental, stay away from it. Some of them were like, what are you talking about, hypothetical appraisals? This is, this property could never be turned into a single-family. It was just an overall, like, who would ever consider putting a single-family here? And it's not even Niskuna schools, right? So there's also that concern with that investment, right? People come to Niskuna for the schools, right? So that's kind of our, our assessment of if this were to turn into a single-family, you would not see a reasonable return. So me putting a business there, not touching the ground, not planning on doing that, having a revenue-driven business, that we can definitely see a return, from our estimates, about a hundred-and-fifty thousand or so in build-out, the purchase price, we're looking to see that return reasonably quicker than if you were to put a single-family, so.
Okay, very good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any other questions? I guess, I guess one of the questions, and I'm, I'm going back to this off, on a new topic, and I know you answered this originally, the alleged hardship has not been self-created. Mr. Hess, can you, I find the applicant is not the owner of the property, and her argument is, as I understand it is, listen, if, if I don't get the variance, then I won't purchase the property, so how could that prong?
Yeah.
You understand my, my, I guess?
Yeah, here's what I would...
Take an under for me.
Here's what I would say. The appropriate way to look at these requirements is that you have to think of Stewart's as the applicant, not Ms. Cofaga. But I think she's produced enough documenta, evidence within her application to address that, or to have evidence on each one of those things. So for instance, on that issue, I think that the evidence that's the most compelling is the fact that it doesn't meet the minimum lot size for R1, and by the time you take into account what the, the set, or front yard and rear yard setbacks would be, you're gonna end up with a building envelope that's not gonna support a house sale in the range that you would have. you're gonna end up with a building envelope that's not gonna support a house sale in the range that you would have to do to do it for here, so. But your question is correct. Ms. Kafaga could walk away from this transaction, Stewart's can't, right? Like if this hap, like, I think the expectation for the community and the, um, the people who said they want residential here is a nice thought, but that's not happening, you know, so Stewart's options are then to sell it to someone who's gonna put retail in there.
Thank you. No, that, that helps, that helps clarify it. I, I think the argument, and I hadn't heard it yet with respect to the size of the, uh, property, the lot size, I think is also instructive.
Yes, uh, we did put it on Appendix A, page eleven, the first paragraph, sorry.
I'm not saying that your application wasn't.
No, I know, I'm just saying we did add that, I didn't highlight it here. Thank you, Mr. Hess.
Okay.
But that was, that was one of the questions I asked you last time, if you have the financial from Stewart's, and you said they, they weren't willing to provide that.
What do you mean? Oh, yes, why they closed, no, they weren't really to release it, all they said was their gas stations obviously make more money, and it wasn't worth keeping open, so.
Right, and that's why I went back to relate it to what you're trying to do, and because we didn't have the numbers from Stewart's.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Kafaga, I, I think we're at the point of the meeting where we're gonna open it up to the members of the community that wish to be heard for or against this application. So if you wouldn't mind having a seat, I'd appreciate that. And I'd like to ask if there's any members of the community that wish to be heard for or against Ms. Kafaga's application, if you, if you wanna come forward. Anybody? All right, sir, why don't you come forward? Please state your name and address for the record.
Ted Thompson, forty-two ten Buckingham Drive. I came in the previous meeting to sup, uh, express support. I listened very, very carefully, as best as I could, to the pros and cons, the very long letter in objection. If you listen carefully, I would say fifty percent of that letter was complaining about Stewart's. We've got a less intensive use here. You leave no use, and it's a attractive nuisance. We've got a less intensive use, an experienced business person, an attractive, it looks like it's gonna be an attractive product, fewer hours open. I think it's only common sense. Let's move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody, is there anybody else that wishes to be heard for or against the application?
Hi, I'm gonna try and make it quick too. My name is Sophia Chaudry, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, you can just give us your address as well.
Five oh five Windsor Court, walking distance from here. Um, I just wanna say from a true-pronged, two-pronged perspective, one is that I grew up here, so forty years ago, plus that's, that property had a gas station. It kind of wasn't great. And then it turned into probably Stewart's and whatnot, so I can see how the neighbors may have concerns, but I can see how they could also be alleviated with something like Mizzou Kitchen. Number two, as a, um, member of the ICCD, the Islamic, um, Center of the Capital District, we have thousands of families that go in and out of the mosque that is very close, and I have never, since my childhood, seen a business that represented what I want on my way to the mosque. And we have so many reasons to pick up something from there and go to a meeting, or a youth group, or a talk, and have something really attractive to bring, rather than just bagels. I'm nothing wrong with bagels. Um, third thing is, I'm not great with numbers like my friend Leila, but I've known her for years now, and I can tell you, if she says something, and she puts her name to it, she has more integrity in her finger than I do in my entire body. So you can trust her to keep this business legit, legal, beautiful, and tasty. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wishes to be heard for or against the application? Sir, if you could state your name and address for the record, please?
My name's Ian Munger, uh, two-two-seven-one Sweetbrier Road. I had a long list of points that I would like to make, but unfortunately, the board has addressed. All of them, I'm strongly in support of this business. I do understand that, I spent a lot of time at that Stewart's. I understand that they had some issues there, but like the other commentator said, they're all from Stewart's issues. Mizzou Kitchen is going to be a community member that cares about the community, they're town residents, they're gonna, to wanna give back, they're gonna keep that property clean, they're gonna address the parking issues, and I think this is a great opportunity, and I think it would be a real shame if the board voted against it.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the community that wish to be heard for or against the application? Sir, just name an address, please?
Josh Panishio, two-two-oh-one Winwood Drive. Um, so I've been in and out of Niskuna most of my life. I actually grew up on West Moreland Drive before my family lived in Niskuna, three block, uh, three houses up from it on Crest Park. I have pretty fond memories as a kid, before we moved to Rosendale Estates, um, of riding my bike to Stewart's, um, with friends and family, my neighbors, and things of that nature. So I think it is something important, in my opinion, to keep in that community and that area. You know, I'd like to see my kids' gen, like, my daughter's generation have something like that. Niskuna's not a very, uh, walkable or bikeable town, you know, like my wife's from Delmar. It's very easy for them to just kinda walk and go, get a cup of ice cream or whatnot, you know, we have to get in a car and go somewhere. So it's a nice little, like, oddity in our town, I guess, is what I would say. But, and then in addition, I would just like to echo other people's comments that were against another business going in here, that Stewart's is way more busier than Leila's Bakery would be, in my opinion. So I don't think some of those deterrents should be, you know, considered as heavily. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? All right. Um, Ms. Kafaga, uh, Mr. Hess, uh, would it be, uh, uh, I, I know we, we talked about putting limitations on, uh, variance, variances, we, I think there's a, that's frowned upon in general, um, to the extent, but with respect to this particular variance, Ms. Kafaga, you've indicated that, you know, with respect to the retail sales, that you plan on limiting it between ten AM, or, ten AM and six PM. If that was a limitation in the, um, variance that was granted for retail sales, would that be something that would be acceptable to you?
Um, I would like some flexibility on that, as I see the business grow, if the demand for customers pick up to potentially a nine to eight, I would like to have some, I, I think we could work out some restrictions as not after this and not before that timeframe.
So what would that be? Because I mean, I, I, we're, I'm considering your variance application, taking, yeah, you're aware that this place is gonna be open from ten AM to six PM.
Yeah.
So if it was open from seven AM to eleven PM, that would change my analysis.
Yeah, I would say let's stick within the window of eight AM to nine PM.
Okay.
I can't imagine us wanting to be open past nine PM. It's, it's not that kinda area, right, to have a late-night cafe, so.
Okay. So i- if there was any variance to approve, um, you would, uh, you would not have an objection to an eight AM to nine PM restriction being put on the areas for retail sales?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Is there any discussion on this, uh, application? Does anybody have any additional questions for Ms. Kafaga?
I am reminding you guys that you have to do your secret determination before you make your final motion, and I will help you with it.
Okay.
Just, last question, I'd just like to hear from you, Leila, why, uh, why that location?
Yeah.
And, and why would you go to all the trouble, spending all that money to, to do it where you heard all the, uh, the close neighbor? I know you got a lot of good letters from people who don't live nearby, but the two people who lived nearby, they were against it.
Sure, and I, I plan to go and introduce myself.
Why that location, and?
Yes.
And, and maybe you can tell us what some of these bacon stuff you make, what people are talking about.
Sure, so I started my business about four, five years ago in Niskuna. We converted our garage into a commercial kitchen, and I do have all the proper licensing for that. And I built my, my community-based, Niskuna and Schenectady. My family, my husband was born, raised here, he works for the town of Niskuna, we are committed to Niskuna. Personally, I have two young children in Niskuna schools, so having my business in Niskuna, if anything were to happen, I'm still available, I'm still close by. I see the potential here with customers, the location of where it is to the ICCD, the Islamic Center is great for me. It is on a busy road. I'm sure plenty of business analysts and experts would say, don't come here, especially with the remediation. I also, I trust my instincts very well, and there's something about this property. I wanna be a community staple and a name in the future that people are like, oh, let's go to Mizzou, and let's grab a cup of coffee, let's go, you know, grab, baklava is probably our number one thing we sell, we make ghee from scratch, we do everything from scratch, I pride myself on that. Mizzou actually means balance in Arabic, um, where I don't make overly sweet items, I like fresh items, and I think this community doesn't have a bakery, we need it. The younger generation is like yearning for more places to go to and to, to experience different foods. I would be the first Middle Eastern bakery in the capital region, I believe. So that is why I want to stick with Niskuna. I've looked elsewhere, but something about this property, it, it just feels right to me, given that, you know, we are Niskuna residents. I've lived here for twelve years or so, my husband's born and raised, you know, so.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you for asking.
Thank you. No other questions? Having heard no other questions, uh, with respect to the secret determination, why don't you walk us through that, Laura, because this, I, we haven't done this in a while.
Yeah, I know. Um, I read the recommendation from the CAC at the last meeting. I'm not gonna read the whole thing again, but just in case you guys forgot, because it was the very beginning. So, um, this is an unlisted action, and the CAC is, uh, recommending board to you. They went through and reviewed all the environmental impacts, and they prepared, uh, recommendation for the filling out of the impact assessment for you that is in your packet. They go through eleven questions related to environmental impacts. They found no to small impact on two of the ele, or, questions two through eleven. The one that they did mention as an impact is the material conflict with the adopted land use plan, and that's specifically to the fact that it needs a use variance. Their hot, their findings, they kind of looked at this similar to the way that they looked at the last, um, use variance recommendation that they did to the zoning board, in that there is a pre-existing non-conforming use that has an intensity of use that's associated with it that can continue. They noted that Stewart's sold food in addition to milk, eggs, cheese, ice cream, toiletries, snacks, it was open for much longer hours. And so when they're looking at the environmental impacts, they were looking at what could be allowed versus what is being proposed, and felt it was a less intense use. As far as changing the character of the neighborhood, the CAC found that the retail convenience store had been integrated into the neighborhood since, before the code was adopted. So converting it into a less intense use while still allowing a small neighborhood business to serve the surrounding community would be supported in the new comprehensive plan. When they were making their recommendation to the zoning board, um, they voted six-zero, that the zoning board prepare a negative declaration. Negative declaration means no environmental impacts. Positive declaration means that you feel that this project has enough environmental impacts that it would need to proceed to an environmental impact statement. They did mention their usual kind of list of things for people to consider, which is often done with the planning board. The planning board will actually do their own seeker recommendation as well, but they often recommend pesticide-free, LED lighting, dark-skY friendly lighting, native plants, um, EV charging stations. So that's like their kind of list for environmental impacts, but generally speaking, the one you'd really be looking at is the part two and the findings. So if you have any questions, let me know, but that's a long-winded way of saying that their recommendation to you is that there's no negative environmental impacts from this project. A lot of that is because there's no site disturbance.
Is there any questions for Laura relative to the secret determination? I know we haven't done this in a while. Okay, haven't done that, so we, first have the motion relative to the, uh, secret declaration, and I would move to adopt the CAC's recommendation with a negative seeker determination. A motion's been made, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
A motion's been made and seconded, uh, Ms. Sheketti, we call the roll.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Chairperson Hoke?
Yes, so, uh, a negative seeker determination's been approved by a vote of six to zero. Now we will move to the use variance. Is there anybody that wishes to make a motion for or against, um, the applicant's request for a use variance?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Dolman?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would move to, uh, grant the use variance as applied, um, and I'll go through my reasoning for that. I find that with the question of can the applicant realize a reasonable return, um, with existing, uh, zoning, I find the applicant's, uh, financial argument that they cannot is compelling, particularly with interest rates as they are, and building costs in an inflationary moment on the whole. The applicant also has the relevant expertise as a licensed real estate agent, and, uh, apparently as a banker, I didn't know that before, to make those sorts of determinations. Additionally, she's provided multiple quote quotes for developing the property that show residential development to be infeasible. Is the alleged hardship unique to this property? I find that it is, and that the environmental contamination from pre-existing use provides a substantial financial and perhaps legal barrier to residential development. Does the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? I have expressed my concern on multiple occasions with the commercialization of residential areas, and I continue to have that concern. However, the financial barriers to residential development on this lot appear to be substantial. And while I empathize with the traffic concerns of some neighbors, these concerns appear to be an objection to what had already been in a pre-existing use. As there's no commercially viable path to residential use, it's not in the interest of the neighborhood or the larger community to have a derelict building rotting in our thoroughfa, thoroughfares. I find that it would be more detrimental to the character of the neighborhood and property values than a locally-owned bakery. Additionally, the proposed use appears to be significantly lower intensity than prior use as a convenience store, or the possibility of this becoming a smoke shop or a similar establishment. As far as is the alleged hardship self-created, no. As the hardship of developing the site as a residential property was not created by the applicant, on the whole and on the balance, um, I move to approve the use variance as written.
A motion's been made, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that for everything that we've stated.
A motion's been made and seconded, uh, Ms. Sheketti, we call the roll.
Mr. Latif?
Uh, I'm gonna vote yes, and the reason, uh, I think for that location, uh, moving it to a bakery, it's gonna be way better for that area and, and the people surrounding it, and all the complaint that we have heard. So I think for all these reasons, Mr. Dolman has stated, I'm gonna vote yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
I vote yes, and I'll add that part of the unique nature of this, uh, application is that there are not all of these other businesses similar to what you're proposing, uh, in such a residential neighborhood, and as a better replacement, uh, than a, another convenience store. I think this has shown to have a lot of support, so I vote yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes, for all the reasons stated on that, and also, that, that building sat vacant for a long time. And now it's gonna be a tax, on a tax, uh, roll. It's gonna be a small, nice business. I think we need that in the town of Niskuna, to be very truthful. So that's why I'm voting yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
I'm gonna vote yes, um, based on the competent financial evidence presented, I think that was compelling to me to reflect that, um, you know, this, this business makes the most sense financially, and, um, you know, I'm also compelled by the, the overall support of the community as well.
Chairperson Hoke?
Yes, and I'd like to thank the applicant, uh, I, I'll vote yes. I'd like to thank the applicant for, uh, taking the time and putting in the effort to get us, working with the board to get us the information that we needed to, uh... us, working with the board to get us the information that we needed to properly analyze the application. I think overall, the biggest concern that I heard was the, from members of the community, especially those members of the community that will be affected by this project the most closely, is that the essential character of the neighborhood, you know, they had concerns with respect to that. The standard that we're implementing is whether this would change the essential character of the neighborhood. If anything, the essential character of the neighborhood will be improved, and a lot of their concerns will be alleviated by this project. If there were other projects to go in, other retail establishments, their concerns could be, in fact, exacerbated. From everybody, everybody that spoke on behalf of the applicant, there's a consensus that, from those individuals, that the applicant will, in fact, improve the character of the neighborhood. I take the applicant at her word. It wasn't a part of the variance that she will honor her commitment to keep the retail sales at reasonable hours and not duplicate the concerns with respect to Stewart's hours. So for all those reasons, your application's been approved. Congratulations and good luck with the project.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I can't wait to try the baklava.
I can't wait to serve all of you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Ketti, thank you, everybody else who waited. I know that was relatively long. We're going to move through the rest of the agenda. Ms. Ketti?
What's that?
Ms. Ketti, will you call the next matter on the agenda, please?
Appeal by Angela Sabados for a variance from Section 220-18B2 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 2252 Berkeley Ave., Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district, to install a shed exceeding the, exceeding the number of accessory structures allowed. Section 220-18B2 states that there shall not be more than three accessory structures on a lot. Currently, the property has three pre-existing accessory structures, a fence, a shed, and a pool. As proposed, the new shed would be the fourth accessory structure. Therefore, a variance for one accessory structure is required. Two notices were mailed, and we just received two letters.
Wait, I'm, sorry. I'm just going to read the letter super fast. Thank you for your patience. So these letters are essentially written the same, except to two different people, so I'll read and mention the names. So the subject is the variance agreement for property at 2252 Berkeley Ave., Schenectady, New York, zoning board of appeals, Town of Niskuna. This letter is to confirm that we, Richard Sabados and Angela Sabados, are requesting a zoning variance for 2252 Berkeley Ave., Schenectady, New York, 12309. We are writing to you as a neighbor to inform you about our application and to obtain your consent for placing a shed on our property. I have applied for a variance from the building and zoning department, Town of Niskuna. We have discussed the details of the variance with you and explained the location and impact to our property, of our properties. We understand that this variance may affect your property, and I want to assure you that we have carefully considered the potential impact. We believe that the proposed variance will not be detrimental to your property or the neighborhood and will be aesthetically pleasing. It will not block light, and it will not block any sunlight or views. By signing below, you acknowledge that you have read or have had this letter read to you, understand the variance request, and agree to waive any objection to the variance as it relates to your property. So one was addressed to Mr. and Mrs. Frank, and it is signed Diane Frank and Matt Frank at 1124 Rose Hill Boulevard. And then the second one was addressed to Mr. and Mrs. Joseph Pataglia, and it is signed by Joseph Pataglia and Claudia Pataglia of 2248 Berkeley Ave.
Thanks. Remember, you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes. Good evening, Chairman and member of the board. My name is Angela Sabados, and 2252 Berkeley Ave., Niskuna, New York, 12309.
Thank you, Ms. Sabados. Before we start, just so you're aware, we only have six members of the board. You've heard me say you need four affirmative votes to get your variance approved. You have an ability to wait till the next meeting when we have a full board? Would you like to do that, or would you like to proceed this evening?
I like to proceed this evening, if it's possible, please.
Okay. Just briefly, with respect to the letters, my understanding of the letters that we received, you prepared the letters for neighbors, correct? And the neighbors, these are neighbors that are most closely affected to the property, correct?
Correct.
And are they neighbors on either side of your property?
They're actually in the back where the shed is going to be. So they're the closest one, actually.
They're closest to the shed?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And why don't you tell us a little bit about why you need the shed?
Okay. It was very interesting, because we move in on April 1st, and because we sold the building, and that was a business, so I have certain things, you know, to store, and I have a self-storage. Actually, I'm paying right now like $300. And I said, "Okay, we need another shed in order, because my mother gets terminally ill, and we need to get the hospital bed, you know, we have the wheelchair and everything else." And then, I'm sorry, but between the time my mother passed away, and that was very hard, and...
I'm sorry to hear that.
Yes. And then I said, "Okay, now we have to really put everything in a shed," you know, her belonging until we sort it out. You know, she just passed like three weeks ago. And I didn't even know I need a permit, because we just moved in, and I talked to the classic shed, and they didn't, I asked them to one point if I need something from the Town of Niskuna, and they said, "No, actually," but probably they did not know. Then I received a letter from the Town of Niskuna, and I said, "Oh, my God, I need a permit." So I ran quick to this location, and I did my best ability, you know, what exactly I have in the backyard. Then I spoke, between the time I spoke with Mr. Tomas Caniso, the building inspector, and I said, "Please, come to my property and let me know exactly what I can do and what can I do, because I love the neighborhood, I want to be with the law, and I want to be clear what, you know, where I can put on my shed." So then he said to me, "Well, you said you have a fence. Actually, you do not have a fence, because we do not have a fence around the property." It's just like a few feeds. I think the former owner, he tried to protect a little bit of privacy, making his, you know, barbecue. So that's not the fence. So he said to me, "Okay, this is not the fence, so you don't have actually three things in your property." So I said, "Okay, so what should I do?" So then we went back, and I apply normally, and as you see, we, this was done very quickly in one day, like not knowing exactly. But then we provide you with the size of the property, where the shed, the other shed came along.
Ms. Sabado, let me just stop you for a second. Laura, my understanding is the applicant is indicating that there is an offense on the structure, although the notice we received indicates that a fence is one of the structures on the property. I see that there is a deck, a pool, and a pre-existing shed. Would those be three accessory structures in and of themselves?
Attached to the house, it doesn't count. So we cited the fence, the shed, and the pool, and it, I believe the denial was signed by Tom. I'm just going to pull it up.
So the applicant is saying that there is, in fact, not a fence, although I would note in one of the photographs, it appears to be that there is a fence, that I see, at least a portion of, one panel of a wood fence blocking off the grill.
Yeah, so, I mean, Tom signed the denial. We would have to proceed with the fact that there's a fence. I mean, unless the applicant was willing to remove all the panels, and then...
So we're taking the position that that one panel constitutes an offense?
He signed the denial. I can't, I'm not going to overrule him.
Laura, could you show the pictures up on the screen?
Oh, yeah, the picture, yeah, I can. Right here. So the, well, there's actually, it looks like a couple panels here.
Ms. Sabado, the only fence that exists on your property is that one panel, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Are there more than two panels?
No. I think that there are just two. I think he just wanted to protect, actually, the grill, the way I'm looking at it.
To protect what? I'm sorry?
The grill.
The grill.
It's a big grill there, so it came with the house, so...
So those two panels are the fence, what they're...
Well, that's why I said fence, because I do not know exactly when I apply. When I came in, and I said, "Oh, yes, it's a little fence there." I mean, I was very honest. But then Mr. Tomas Caniso, he said to me, "Those are not fences." So I was confused, so I said to him, "Okay, so then what do I have to do?" So I said, "Well, you have to provide, you know, the rest, what you have to do and where the shed is going to come over." So it's going to be actually an opposite side next to the other shed. And we have a picture, actually.
I understand the shed. I'm just trying to get to the point, what, so there has to be three accessory structures on the property for us to get to, your shed being a fourth accessory structure? I guess we could move forward with the assessment that it is... Mr. Hestie, do you have anything to say with respect to, I mean, this board could certainly determine whether that's a fence or not a fence. I mean, it looks like a fence, but...
Yeah, I think Laura's right. We have to go with the building inspector's determination that it was a fence. If, in fact, it's only one panel or two panels, one appropriate question for the applicant is, is it worth removing those two panels so you don't need a variance?
Yeah, we can move the two panels. That's not a problem, because I actually don't need it.
Okay, well, so the simple solution to the variance, and we're required to find the simplest solution? Okay, that's, one of the things are, can the applicant achieve what she's looking to achieve without needing a variance? If you took those two panels down, that fence, you don't need a variance at all, and you can put the shed up as you contemplate it now without any need for variance being complete compliance with the law.
Yes, definitely.
Or the zoning...
Mr. Hoak, just a quick question. Is the shed, the setbacks are good? Okay, all right, thank you. Just didn't want her to come back.
Yeah. Ms. Latif is just making sure that we didn't want to be in a situation where you got to put up the fence, and we say, "Just kidding, got to come back for a different variance."
No, 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 no. No, it's just, we don't need that.
Okay, so...
The former owner...
So, okay, so, I'm sorry, sir, if you want to come up and be heard...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want to be...
It's only on the...
Well, just come forward and tell us your name.
That's my husband.
I understand. Why don't you come in?
I have a problem. I had an accident, and I don't hear so well.
Okay, sir, can you just state your name?
Alexander Sabados, I'm his, her husband. The time when we moved there, that was April 1st, we came from Schenectady, and I asked what the purpose of that fence? I never figured out. Then Mr. Tomas Capuzin came to the property and asked him, "What is the purpose of that fence?" Because I don't see it. And he said, "I don't know." And I don't know either.
So we can take it off?
Said, "What is the purpose of that fence?"
I can tell you, I can tell you the purpose. I can tell you the purpose. It's when they were barbecuing, probably the wind and so on, so that's why they put that fence. So that's what it looks like to me.
Yeah, they wanted it to, either to hide or blind the view of the grill or to enhance the performance of the grill. But listen, I don't want to tell you that you, you can go forward with your variance application this evening, but one of the things that we have to ascertain is, is there a simple solution to your circumstance? And that is, just remove those panels. And if you're willing to do that, then just remove the panels. You don't need the variance, and then you can put up your shed.
Correct. That's what we do.
So we're all set.
Because I went to the two neighbors, and I got, you know, the...
No, I appreciate the letters. The neighbors aren't concerned about it, but again, what, one of the issues that we have to ascertain is whether you can accomplish what you're looking to accomplish, i.e. put up the shed, without needing a variance. And you just told us you can, because if you take down the panels, you don't need the variance.
Yeah, we take down the panels, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so procedurally, do we need to just ask the applicant that they are willing to remove the fences and then withdraw their application? Do we need to do anything?
Okay.
Procedurally, we just need to confirm you're withdrawing your application for a variance, correct?
Like, explain to me one more time.
Withdraw, no longer applying for variance.
Yes, actually, no, because if we take the fences, then I don't need anything else.
But, yeah. Ms. Pacheco is saying, "We're not going to consider your variance application," and you're okay with that?
Yes, I'm okay with it.
You've got to learn so much about corner bakeries while you were here today.
Yes, definitely. I think that was interesting.
I appreciate your coming in, and good luck with your project. I'm very sorry to hear about your mother, okay?
Oh, thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Good night.
And last but not least, Ms. Ketti?
Appeal by Peak Environmental Concepts Agent for a variance from Section 220-53B and Section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the Town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 1136 Van Antwerp Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district, to construct a deck partially within the side yard setback. Section 220-53B allows an addition to a non-conforming residential structure, which brings the addition into a non-conforming side or rear yard no nearer than the side or rear yard, rear property line than the existing structure, and no nearer than half the distance specified by the specific residential zoning district. Section 220-13 Schedule IC requires a side yard setback of 15 feet. The existing house carport is two feet from the side property line. Therefore, seven feet, six inches becomes the minimum required side setback. As proposed, the deck will be six feet, seven inches from the side property line. Therefore, an 11-inch side yard setback variance is required. Twelve notices were mailed, zero responses.
Thank you, sir. Will you state your name and address for the record?
Jamie Curtis, Peak Environmental, 44 Wood Road, Round Lake, New York.
Okay, describe the proposed project.
Were you removed an existing deck and replacing it with a new one, essentially the same footprint?
Ms. Pacheco, I'm sure you have questions?
Thank you, Chairman. Just, I think, only one question. You said it's to replace one that was in that footprint. Is that still there, or has that been...
That's been removed.
It was removed already?
It was a disrepair. It needed to be replaced, yes.
Okay, so it was taken down recently, or...
It was in the last two months.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the board with questions with respect to this application?
Yes. Did you say the deck is already up?
The new deck is not up. No, we're waiting for the variance to build it, correct?
So what's the difference between the old deck and the new deck?
Better built, new materials, updated.
Okay, well, how about the heights or...
Same, same footprint, same height, everything's the same.
So the only thing you're...
Comes out the same door, yeah.
The only thing is different, 11 inches?
No, that's, the current deck was in that footprint, too.
It was in...
Yeah, there's essentially no difference between the footprints of the existing...
Okay, so let me redirect that to the town.
Yeah.
No building permit for the old deck.
Huh?
No building permit for the old deck.
Oh, so they didn't have a...
Variance, yeah.
So because it's coming in front of us now, that's a requirement, so this 11 inches become the setback?
Correct, yes.
All right, thank you.
And are you aware of any concerns from any of the members, any of the neighbors relative to this project?
No, sir.
And how long was the original deck in place?
I don't know that it's...
May I just come forward and tell us your name and address?
Hi, my name is Jen Holland, and it's 1136 Van Antwerp.
Okay.
I don't know. We bought the house. Isn't that helpful?
When did you buy the house, Ms. Holland?
We bought the house in 2019.
Okay, and it was there when you bought the house?
Yes, and the back part was an addition in, I think, 2006, I believe. So that's when I would imagine they put the deck on, because that's when that area with the sliding doors was built.
And I think the testimony was the existing deck was in disrepair at the time that it was removed.
Yeah, it's not safe to walk on. Underneath some kind of sinking.
All right. I don't have any other questions. Is there any other members of the board that has any questions? Okay, are there any members of the public that wish to be heard for or against this application? Okay, having heard no members of the public that wish to be heard for or against this application, are there any members of the board that wish to make a motion?
Excuse me.
Six-member board question.
We're okay with that.
Just clarify the record, and I appreciate Ms. Chiketti pointing it out to me, but we only have six members of the board.
Yep.
You understand if you're moving forward, you need four affirmative votes. You have the opportunity to adjourn the matter to the next meeting, and you want to move forward, correct?
We'd like to move forward, yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any members of the board that wish to make a motion for or against the application?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to approve this variance. It's really, can't be achieved any other way, because they're replacing an old deck, and it seems to be the only thing is different is 11 inches, and that's because, not because of the applicant, because of it was built before our town code existed. So this request is substantial. It's not really substantial, again, because to me, the deck was there, the same size, no different, so it hasn't made any difference over the years. Would the request have any adverse physical environment? It's not going to have any environment issues, and actually, this new deck is probably a better-looking deck than it was. And is the difficulty self-created? I'm going to say no in this case, and for all these reasons, I vote to make a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Latif. A motion's been made. Is there a second to that motion?
It's second. I second it for all the reasons stated.
A motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Chiketti, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Chairperson Hope?